Looks like it's about six o'clock, so we'll come to a special meeting, work study session of the city council to order. So we will have Councilman Grayden Watson, he has been in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, that is seen and seen by its eyes.
Okay. Well, the only item of business in the work study session is a presentation by Ms. Peterson about debt, debt service, debt fund balances, future fund balance, debt follow sleeves, all those exciting topics. She told me that she is totally, a totally oral presentation, no PowerPoint, but I see a PowerPoint up, so she's already.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Never trust an accountant.
When the residents approved the city charter, the charter includes that the city will adopt a fund balance policy, and that fund balance policy requires that the city has a 25% minimum unassigned fund balance. So today, that would be roughly 3.6 million, which is really like the bare minimum fund balance policy. And so, looking at our current and proposed, our current fund balance policy requires 50% of our general fund operations, which is roughly 7.1 million. But we're proposing to add two additional layers to that, and that's to restrict one year of our debt service payments. So in the event of a recession or any unforeseen large expenses, we are always able to pay our debt service payments on time and give us enough time to respond to any reductions in revenues. This was discussed at the retreat last month to also allow the finance director to restrict a certain amount for sales tax corrections or refunds. Because as the surrounding area that has a Litchfield Park zip code continues to grow, us receiving sales tax that doesn't actually belong to the city, the risk keeps growing. So right now, I would actually recommend that to be 1 million. So with the, our current and the proposed, that would bring us to a total of 9,851,000 or 69% of our general fund operations. So right now, our unassigned fund balance with our current restrictions is 23.2 million. We are restricting projects that we've already committed to. That really leaves a remaining balance of 11.3 million. So adding on these two additional layers, that would leave us a remaining fund balance of about 8.6 million that would be available for capital projects. And that concludes my very brief presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, so this is mainly about dinner, that's what you're telling me?
Pretty much.
I can't blame her. Are there questions or comments from council on the fund balance, debt policy? Well, alright.
With that, I can bring this to the next council meeting to update the actual policy. It'll be formally adopted by council. And then I have a brief presentation on the debt policy, which is a very brief debt policy, as you can see, it's a half a page. But what this would do is it would require the city to prepare a cash flow analysis of any potential new debt. And it would have to combine the current debt, and that would have to accompany every future debt proposal. So the analysis has to include that the city can maintain service levels for residents at existing levels before we consider any new debt. And it also has to consider any economic downturns, how the city can respond to them. And it shall include the debt fund balance policy that we just went over, which requires the city to maintain one year of debt payments, including any potential new debt payments. It also restricts the amount of debt we can issue and cannot be greater than 16% of our total operating revenues. So, and today's budget, this is actually what is budgeted for our current debt and potential new debt, if we council decides to do that early next year, that would put us right about at the 16% max. Now, as revenues grow, as the Litchfield Square is built out, there is capacity for additional debt as revenues increase. And that concludes that presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll ask the council. Based on this policy, do you foresee any complications or potential things that could restrict us moving forward?
I don't think anything negatively, I think it will just keep us from issuing too much debt. And this is new for us, this will be new for the city. I think it's unique, looking at other cities' debt policies, because most cities ask their voters to approve bonds, and they have a dedicated revenue source for that debt. Or we're just using our, our operating revenues. So I think this is a good start, and, you know, we can always adjust it later if we see there is any issues.
You said a good start. What, if, if you were to take it to the next level, what would you say, least yet?
I think a good start is on the percentage. I think the policy itself is good. If we get to a point where there's capital projects that need to be done, and you know, we can afford to go to 18%, then maybe look at that, but I think this is a good start because it matches what our current budget is. Because it allows for about 11% of budgeted operating revenues to exceed expenditures. So we're still budgeting to increase our fund balance.
Councilman James.
Just one clarification, is this a, is this something that was directed from the charter? Or is this just a best practices policy that worked, this came from the charter?
It, it is a best practice policy, and the city currently has a debt policy, but it's very vague. It's just, we won't issue debt to fund daily operations. So it's good, good practice to have a debt policy like this, and it is required in the charter via ordinance. So if we're good with this language, I will bring the ordinance for first reading next month.
I would propose, you might want to have a couple of slight modifications to the debt policy. If, I think it would be, it would be wise if you, if you're going to cap debt on based upon revenues, that you don't look at just one year of revenues. I think you should use at least, at least a three-year average, maybe even a five-year average of revenues, and then, and then with the, with the proviso that it would be the lower of either the current revenue projection or, or the five-year average. So that if you have unusual years in there that, that end up spiking it, you take the impact of that out.
That makes sense.
So are you saying, take the average of the three to five-year window, or are you saying, take the low?
I'm saying, take the lower of the, like the next 12 months. Or the, I use a five-year average, okay, the average of five previous years. So you take out the lesson, the impact of any spikes in revenue that happen for construction sales tax, or whatever, I mean, some, these are operating revenues, I guess, but we don't, we're not using construction sales tax. But if we get, you know, something that, that happens, spike that revenue, that we, we don't count that on the filing list.
Interest earnings could be a good example.
Sorry?
The interest earnings could be a good example.
Interest earnings, that's a good example, you know, if you look at, looked at our average for interest earnings over five years, they're significant, that's significantly less than what we're doing right now. And it's, what we're doing right now is significantly less than probably what it's going to be in the future, so I think it would be good to take that effect, those kind of effects out of the calculation.
Makes sense.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Mayor, do you mind?
Please.
One thing I would say on this is that this is a way of, and council knows this, this is a way of the city continuing to be very fiscally conservative. I worked for cities before that were not, I worked for cities before that didn't keep one month's cash balance on hand. The league recommends Paige to keep, is it six or nine? I think it's six. Eight, six to nine, and we generally keep 22, 22 to 24 months cash on hand because the city is very fiscally conservative. And because of that, it gives us control, it gives us freedom other cities don't have, because we ran that way. And this policy, if agreed upon, set in place, would make sure, make sure the city continues to operate that way, and that's important. And I think this is a great step and great plan for the future. I won't say that it ties your hands, but it does make it so that future councils have to spend, have to spend properly. And I think it's a good thing to do. Thank you, Paige, for working on this.
One more question. Does this policy restrict us from the plan that we have in place for the roads, for the, the tunnel, all the infrastructure, the city garage, everything that we, we've got on our CIP list?
It could if we factor in the average of the five-year revenues. So right now, the way it stands, we could issue 12 and a half, roughly 12 and a half million in bonds and afford an $800,000 payment. But if we, you know, smooth out those interest, those higher interest earnings, that could lower this. I would have to run the numbers, that concept, or what it would be.
How much you can spend for?
It would be a good idea to run all of that, all of that before we actually put on the, on the wording itself. For, for the most part, if the decision we're going to have is not so much, isn't between projects as it is, how much do we want to do with that, and how much do we use cash? Because we have a significant cash bound, so we don't, we have less need necessarily to borrow for a lot of these things, but some, in some cases, we do it because of that expenditure of it. So we'll, you know, we'll take care of, we'll look at all that before we bring the language back.
So basically, before, we were required to have 35%, 15%, and this would add that we'd have to keep one years of, basically one year of debt policy balance on hand.
It gives us 69% instead of 50%.
Very conservative.
So, you know, that, I, I can tell you that it's, having been, been mayor during the time when we had the 2008 real recession and having cash on hand is tremendous support during those times. Makes it a lot easier to keep your staff, all of your staff. There's still, sometimes it can be pain involved with the staff in terms of freezes of compensation or things like that. But it, we were able to go through and not have any layoffs, not change the level of services to our, to our residents during period 2008 to 2010. So it, the cash, you know, it, it doesn't seem like it's that important today because we're not looking for it, and our, and our economy's good enough, that our revenues have been very good. But it, it doesn't take a huge hiccup before we start seeing our revenues go down. So you have to be careful, we've got a lot of dependence on sales tax. So fortunately, a lot of our sales tax comes from groceries, which, hey, looks like that's going to be okay in the future. A few months ago, six months ago, that was questionable, how much we might lose in groceries, grocery sales tax. A lot of sales tax comes from businesses like the Wigwam and restaurants that are, that are very much dependent upon tourism, and people's ability to have excess money that they can spend, companies to have excess monies to have conventions. So it's really, you know, we have to be careful that we, we maintain a, a cash balance so that we don't have to worry about those fluctuations. Okay, if there's any more questions, we can go on to the regular meeting. Just urge everybody on council to carefully read these documents, because when they come back, we're going to be asked on them, on the language that's going to go into the city ordinance. Want to make sure that you understand it and are happy with it. Because you're going to be, it's going to be part of your life potentially, with the downturns. Okay, the work study session is then closed. Good job, nice oral presentation. We will call the regular meeting of the city council to order. And we will begin with council members' reports. We can begin with Councilmember Allen. I know you have much reports, because you've been very busy.
Thank you, I have been busy. You will see, handed out in front of you, Coalition for Protecting Arizona's Lifeline page. And I had the opportunity recently to attend the West Valley Cities and Towns Dinner hosted by Central Arizona Project. And they are building a coalition because they have upcoming discussion, they've been having ongoing discussions with upper basin states on Colorado River water rights. And so that is something that they have been working diligently to inform people of that upcoming, those discussions, and they really want to educate all of the stakeholders on this information, so I pass this out to you so that you can see, Andrew, you're probably more than familiar with all of this. So their call to action right now is to just educate people so that they are informed about what's happening. And they have, their call to action is to have mayors join this coalition. So I've passed that information out for you so you can get familiar with it and have an opportunity to read more about what the AP is doing. And I recognize that the city of Litchfield Park has our utility provider, Liberty Utilities, and we are sourced from groundwater here. But it's still important, I think, to be aware of the situation, because if CAP water is restricted, then we all will feel the effects of that. So there's a larger implication if CAP continues to face additional restrictions. So we had an opportunity to do that. I would like to thank our Director of Communications for attending the Academies of the Southwest Leadership Alliance. This was something that Agua Freya Union High School District has started. And since we have a high school going up on the hilltop, they invited the city to participate, so I will be doing that. And Yoshua was able to attend the first meeting, and she had really positive things to say about that. It's led by Agua Freya and the CEO of Westmark. And then with Westmark, I wanted to just share that they have started a 501(c)(3), the Westmark Foundation, that is focused on workforce development initiatives. So they are really trying to target industries that the West Valley is attracting and support those industries. So it's really a lot of good work going on, I'm really excited at all the different things that are affecting Litchfield Park in here. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have to do something about this Protecting Arizona's Lifeline Coalition?
Well, can you, can you agree to support it, I guess?
Okay, so that, that's, there's, the ask is to support it.
Yes.
Is that an ask? I don't think it's somebody that has to come to council, just has to be, I just have to do it.
I don't know these things, I'm still, how do you do it?
Well, we have a city attorney here who will tell us that we have all these things we have to jump hoops, we have to jump through, but we really don't. We can, I can go ahead and join this on behalf of the city, and the city man, the city manager will support it with staff, with staff as necessary. So it'll, it'll be fine.
Okay.
And our, and our city attorney will smile, and he'll say, yes, that's what we're going to do. Mayor does whatever he wants to do. Wish it was that way. But yes, so if you bring me, give me the information.
Okay. Thank you, it's the first time I'm doing this, so you have to walk me through it. But I am happy to comply with whatever you need so that we can.
Just, I, just make the ask, then, then I need, perfect.
Okay.
You got it, alright.
Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman?
Andrew, to elaborate on the water situation on the Colorado River a little bit, we are in, the Bureau recently declared a tier-one shortage. Arizona loses, under a tier-one shortage, 512,000 acre feet of surface water on the Colorado River. Arizona has voluntarily taken these cuts for, for the last five to 10 years. So in terms of our water supply, Arizona is currently not impacted, and, you know, we haven't lost anything. The interim guidelines, which control how the Colorado River water is divided among the seven basin states, are set to expire next year. So what Councilmember Allen was referring to is these guidelines that are agreement between these seven states as to how much water each state has agreed can take. That will expire next year, so if you can imagine, the negotiations are pretty intense over water, especially in, in the west and in our climate. It does not impact Litchfield Park, it doesn't directly impact our water supply. But our neighbors around us, the cities around us, do have CAP allocations. And when CAP experiences cuts, when Arizona experienced cuts, it impacts the cities around us, their water supply. And they don't have surface water, they tend to rely on groundwater. So the wells in and around Liberty, our water provider, could, you know, experience higher use that has a long-term impact on our, so the hope is that the seven states can come together, negotiate, and come up with a good compromise for, for all involved. I will say that Arizona has done more than our fair share. Hopefully others do too.
And to that point, though, if they aren't able to come to a compromise, it will go to the Department of Interior to decide. And then it's unilateral, and we lose the ability to really negotiate, so it's important to try now and to be supportive now.
It is. Okay, any else? Thank you for the information. Councilman Dan Watson.
Like many of you, most of you, I attended the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, lots of good information, good presentations. Recently attended the 9/11 pancake breakfast with the Gudger Fire Department, thank you very much. It's good to see 9/11 marked as an important day in our history, because it really is. We thank you all for your commitment. Yesterday, I attended a ribbon cutting at the villas at Litchfield Park, which ironically is outside of Litchfield Park. But there in the Glendale Island that we've been discussing, and there was a lot of why I wish we were in Litchfield, and I told them we wish they were too. And to come and enjoy our restaurants and our city center when it's developed, and the new library, and there was a lot of excitement about that, so good event.
I thought you were going to give a report in Italian. Okay, Councilman James, our call. Alright. My report is short, I was, I was happy, we, we, I have a meeting every quarter, I think it is, with the superintendent for Agua Freya, and we talk about what's going on in the hilltop and how the, all the plans for the academy and the Performing Arts Center is coming. I, I don't know if anyone has noticed, but they, we actually have the very first vertical pieces of the building going up. There are slabs that have been poured, and the tremendous amount of work has, has been accomplished already, and they're making progress. He assures me that they will be ready with the, with the academy for it to open in August 26th, that it will be done. And I assured him that our library and our roundabout and the landscaping work that we're going to do on the hilltop, those sorts of things, all of that will be done by August of 26th. So the whole project is coming together really well on a very, very fast timeline. But it's, it is transforming already the hilltop, so I would also, I think everybody on the council's got noticed, there was a fundraising dinner coming up at the end of October that is, is fundraising only for money to go to the Performing Arts Center. So for things outside of their school budget, so it's money for the Performing Arts Center. And Agua Freya is working with the Historic Society to allow the Historic Society to raise some money, I think also. So there is a really good relationship being developed between Historic Society and Ice Florida. I think it'll be really beneficial to the Historic Society as it goes on. And then the final, just a piece of information, I assume most people have seen the, the head of the Maricopa Association of Governments is a person named Ed Zucker. He was the city manager of City Phoenix before he came to us at MAG. He's done a very good job, and fortunately, MAG is now through the, the elective issues of getting the half-cent sales tax extended. So the money that's needed to build the freeways are insecure for the next 20 years. So, to make a long story short, Phoenix needs a new city manager now, so Ed has just been appointed now the new city manager of City Phoenix, so he's going back to the City Phoenix. And there's like 415,000 reasons why he's doing that. Well, he's got a lot of reasons. So anyway, we're losing, we're going to lose, we're going to lose Ed at MAG, which is a, is a big deal. We need, you know, we're going to have to find somebody to lead that organization that has the unique skills of dealing with the legislature and dealing with construction companies, right of other things. So, just a piece of information. And that completes my report. I'm sorry, Vice, you know, I can see him up there, but he's so, so quiet, and so, he hasn't, he moved now. Alright, Vice Mayor, do you have a report?
No, I, I don't have much. The city retreat, I think, was extremely beneficial. I really appreciate you guys putting that all together. And the League Conference was another event that everybody attended, it was a good event as usual. That's all.
Thank you.
They're here, they're sucking up our water.
That's what I think, I second that. Alright, do we have a report from city manager?
Mayor and Council, the report's in your pocket, I welcome any questions if you haven't yet this time.
Any questions for the city manager? Alright, brings us to a call to the community, do we have any requests to speak? Oh, alright, it's an opportunity for people to address the council on a non-agenda item. No requests, then we'll move on. Presentations, we have proclamations for the Pitt Hopkins Syndrome Awareness Day, ovarian cancer awareness month, Cities and Towns Week Proclamation, National School Lunch Week Proclamation. Make sure I got them all, of a Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation. So are there, are there any representatives of any of those organizations here? Okay, which, which, okay, which ones?
School Lunch Program, which is all major schools.
Okay, and oh, okay, there, and Mr. City Attorney, which one are you on?
Pitt Hopkins.
Pitt Hopkins, okay. So if you would like, I would read your, your proclamations, if you would like them read, otherwise, they're in the record and and I was, I would not read them, but I will give you copies of the proclamation itself. It's up to you, if you'd like to have them read, I'll be happy to do that.
Hey, presentation.
Yeah, that's fine, you're okay?
No, no need to read the.
Okay, but I, I do want to say, I do want to say a few words about some of them. The Arizona Cities and Towns Week Proclamation. Arizona Cities and Towns is an organization that represents every city and town across the state. 91 of them, I think, and maybe going to go to 92 now with the incorporation of a new city down by Queen Creek. That organization works tremendously hard to keep local control in each city, so that each city can make the decisions that are necessary for its residents to be, to be happy living in the city, so that, so that city councils can meet their local residents' needs for services and for lifestyle that those, those residents need or want. So it is very important that if you get a situation where you are asked about the, about the Arizona Cities and Towns as a league, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, I would urge you to remember that they're very important, indirectly very important to everybody's life who is in this room. Without the work of the league, we would not have the ability to operate our city in a way that, that this city can try to meet the needs of our residents. There is no question that the, that the state legislature would further restrict our abilities to do things, and, and, and they would restrict us in ways that would make it very difficult for us to do our jobs. So I would urge you all to be supportive of the Arizona Cities and Towns Week and the League of Arizona Cities, Arizona Cities and Towns, who represents all the cities and towns in Arizona. National School Lunch Week Proclamation, again, I, I have had the opportunity to be at Litchfield School many, many, over many years, and serve lunch or breakfast to the kids. And I can tell you how important it is to those children that And I can tell you how important it is to those children that they have something to eat. And I have heard from the teachers that it is important to the teachers and those kids' ability to learn in school. It is important for them to eat. If they go in with a, you know, with a where they're hungry and and they're not, they don't have food that will give them the energy to participate in class, you'll see it in the way that they react and the way that they deal with class. So I would urge everyone here to remember the importance of the National School Week, National National Lunch, School Lunch Week. Domestic Violence Awareness is something that I got involved in when I was chairman of MAG many years ago. Tremendous problem in our in our state, across our country. We are, we in Arizona, in Maricopa County, we do a number of things that are trend setting to try to help to help police the problem. But it is a, it's still a difficult problem that really comes back to the mental health of our nation. And you can define mental health in this category as as broad as you can define it. It involves just moral character and things that, you know, we have got to teach our kids so that they don't grow up to be trapped in the in the cycle of violence that happens in so many families. So that's another one that's very important. And Pitt Hopkins is a syndrome that we know from our city attorney. It's very, it's a very, it's a rare syndrome. But when it hits, it devastates families and we need to be aware that of that particular syndrome, but also that many of our families get hit with these these situations that are very unusual and very rare, and we need to be there to support. So with that, I will sign, I have signed these, I think, and I'm happy to give you copies. While you're here, before you leave, miss all the rest of our business.
Sure. Let me take a picture.
Yeah.
I'll just give off.
Okay. We don't want them to be. Well, okay, let's get a picture of all council. Everybody get up. All right, right over here. Three, two, one. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We want for Pitt Hopkins to awareness.
Well, no, would you like to do one for Pitt Hopkins? Before you give it, you have to take the five minutes.
I'll I'll take a picture.
Anything to extend the meeting and.
Kind of self serving. I was supposed to be on the left side. Well, I could I borrow your. Okay.
Watch it, Paul. Sorry.
It's learning to triple set. Hey, so that brings us to good kind of achievement for our annual accounting reporting. And I don't seem to have the certificate sitting here with these proclamations. So did you not give me the certificate?
I think it was in the packet.
This packet here?
Well, the agenda packet.
What's that?
In the agenda packet. I don't think, I'm not sure.
So I don't have one that I can just present to you? Okay, well, just then we're gonna just say congratulations on receiving the certificate that we have a copy of in our agenda packet. Once again, we've been, we're blessed with a an accounting system that is recognized each year as performing adequate and more than adequate, being very accurate and not having issues. I don't know if we had any findings at all in our last audit. I don't think so. Congratulations both for the city manager and of Director of Finance for a good job. Okay. Excuse me, that'll take take us to our report section. We have a report from Goodyear Fire Department. You have two chief people here. So this is gonna be a big report.
Yes, he's got the second part.
Okay.
After the nomination. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ed Paul, Deputy Chief of the Goodyear Fire Department. I have the activity report from August. But first, I'll talk about a few changes of Goodyear Fire. Chief Luizy got called up to the big leagues, fourth floor of City Hall. So he is he is now interim deputy city manager. So with that movement, Deputy Chief Tim Wayne moved into the fire chief position and Battalion Chief Eric Klein Schmidt moved into the other deputy spot. So you will see him in the rotation making presentations. So this is Eric. All right, so for August, we responded to eighty two calls in Litchfield Park. Seventy of them were EMS calls. Three of those were three were car accidents, two cobs and one gunshot wound. There were eight false alarms, two hazardous conditions and one aircraft standby for the medical facility at Camelback and Dyser. Specialty locations, La Loma had a total of seventeen calls that were EMS. No, sixteen EMS, one false alarm, fifteen of those were transported, and three of those calls were falls that were all transported. Aseenda had nine total calls for service, eight of them were transported, three of them were falls, and they were all transported. Fire prevention, thirteen occupancy inspections, two plan reviews and two construction permits. Any questions?
Questions to the council? Looks like no questions. Once again, thank you and your men for the service they give to our to our residents. We very much appreciate it.
Thanks for the support.
Okay, that takes us to the Avondale. Litchfield Park Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is the report for August. In the month of August, our team responded to five hundred and three calls for service. That's compared to three hundred and eighty three August of twenty twenty four. Seventy one percent of those calls for service were officer initiated while twenty nine percent were citizen initiated. Out of those, we did two hundred and eighteen traffic stops last month. That's compared to seventy seven for August of twenty twenty four. Our team issued sixty one citations during the month compared to twenty one in August of twenty twenty four. We conducted sixty six business checks compared to fifty one for August of twenty twenty four. Our continued emphasis is traffic enforcement along Camelback, Litchfield Road, and we're also doing a lot of the school zone details along Wigwong Boulevard in the morning and afternoon for school pickup and drop off. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions to council?
How really, what is this for my own education? What is a business check? What does that entail?
A business check, simply what it sounds like. So our officers do those at all times of the day and night. So it could be during the daytime, officers stop by and make sure everything is running according to plan, that everything's kept safe. And obviously, at nighttime, we do those to ensure that businesses are safe and nothing's out of place and no crimes being committed.
And secondly, I just thought it was interesting. It seems like every month the, because it ends up on the report, the number of traffic stops with the speeders who have active arrest warrants. It seems like that's becoming a, you'd think if you had an active arrest warrant, it wouldn't be speeding, but.
Yeah, you would think that, right?
So, but yeah, thank you for, appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. Thank you so much.
So just anecdotally, as you're out and running around, does it seem like the speeds are higher or lower or the same as they were a year ago?
Just looking, it looks like they're they're remaining the same. But with our officers out there on a constant basis, I could tell in the weekends, that's when most of them are are enforced. Traffic seems to slow down a lot and people are taking note that we're out there. So.
From January, it's probably another setup.
Right.
We'll see what happens.
That when the that when the third officer comes on in the, okay, that's January.
The traffic position.
Okay.
This is still January.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, any other questions for Congress?
I saw in the report that quite a bit happening over in Aldea. That uptick just in that one spot is the same. It says Aldea Drive and Aldea Road on one and Aldea Drive and Aldea Circle on the other. Does definitely seems like there's a little bit happening on that.
Contains the same residents.
It's okay. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys, and all the service they give to our our community, our residents. Very much appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. I'm getting it.
Okay, that takes us to our staff reports, beginning with a finance monthly report. Your report, Ms. Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The complete report is in your packet. I just wanted to make a note of one thing that for the first two months of the year, our sales taxes down about ninety percent. There was an unusual adjustment that I don't anticipate will happen again. So this could smooth out. I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about yet, but just something I'm keeping my eye on, aware of. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions for the finance director? All right, Don Ceni, thank you for your report. Good job. Next item is communication update.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The complete report is in your packet and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a quick comment. I just, I wanted to tell you how thorough and engaging that report was that was in our packet. I mean, considering there was no benchmark or no standard, I thought you did a very nice job of kind of detailing us on what was going on and appreciate that.
Thank you. And let me know if there's anything else you'd like to see. I'm happy to include that.
I have a comment as well. I appreciate you being proactive, especially when it came to that news story of the animal hoarding case that was in Litchfield Park, but it was really in the unincorporated Maricopa County piece of that. So I appreciate you trying to proactively reach out to broadcaster news outlets to kind of clarify what that really means when they say Litchfield Park versus an incorporated Maricopa.
Yes, that is an ongoing battle. However, I'm seeing positive impacts already. There'll be some news coming out. And the reporter did do did their due diligence to ensure that the area they were referencing was Litchfield Park. Some of it was not. So I can see the positive effects of that already.
Good. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us then to our city engineer, Mr. Berenski's report. Since he's moving up this way, I know we're ready for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The report is intact. I've noticed some new information, so happy to answer any questions.
Question, please, Councilmember.
So I mean, like I said, read the packet, tried to read, or tried to understand as much of particularly as it relates to the the Luke Air Force Base one. I guess kind of wanted to get your feel on where it's at, because at some point in time, I mean, we probably, we need to probably communicate this, you know, communications director to our citizens and be proactive, getting this out and letting people know what's going on. So I think the report was kind of what we saw, but I'm just curious your take.
Thank you, Councilmember. So we're in the very early stages of the Luke Airport. So I know there's some members of council, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, that we're in the early stages of the PGA Northern South, and it takes a few years to get going. So I didn't articulate it as much in the report, but my discussions with representatives from the airport space, there's different phases and we're in kind of the phase one. And it's the investigation phase. And unfortunately, with the federal government, a lot of things revolve around funding allocations and and who is the squeaker wheel? And that's kind of the message I got from my contacts with the airport space was there's a lot of superfund sites, a lot of contamination sites in the country, and everybody's asking for the money. And so part of the importance of remedial investigation is that we show that there is or isn't a problem and the limits of the problem. And once they can show that there is really a problem that needs attention, the funding will start heading in that direction. And that's kind of where we are. And that's why the representatives from Luke want to get as many tests done as they can, and they want to drill additional wells. So so right now, we're trying to make the wheel as squeaky as we can, is what he's describing to us.
So to make a squeaky wheel, should we not put something out that says that we're in the process of investigating?
You know, it's very difficult because we don't have enough information to answer any questions. Where if there's any question answered, the answer for everything is going to be, we don't know. We are working on it. And then it's a very, it puts us in a very difficult spot. And it is these kind of problems are difficult initially, not only is it early, but it's also difficult to think about. This, this is a contamination of you know, PFOS, PFO, whatever in the groundwater that is anywhere from a hundred feet to two hundred deep, probably.
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred feet. So it's not like, it's not like something that's on the surface that's impacting you. You're not getting any water clearly from that unless it happens to be picked up in the Liberty system. So there's not really anything from the city standpoint, we, the only area where we have where we potentially are having an impact from from these two chemicals would be in the lake, which I think we assume there is some, and we maybe know there's some.
We had a test about two years ago, two years ago, we're right on the.
It's the very small borderline of whether it's relevant or not relevant. So it it's, I think it's a little bit premature because you know, it's not really at this point posing a particular risk to our citizens. Unless it's a risk that they're getting from the water they get from Liberty. That is a subject that we are pushing on Liberty to get as much information as we can and as much as as much as they will communicate, because they're the ones who have hands to answer the question. So it's not being ignored. It's at this point, I don't know what exactly what we're going to do other than continue to try to push Liberty. Unfortunately, the the requirements for filtering and cleaning up this situation that have been placed on Liberty are less than what we thought they were going to be further out in time. So there's more time for Liberty to do nothing more than what they're doing now. So it's, it's a, you know, it is a a difficult problem. And I don't know, I don't know, you could probably find a, you know, a medical expert somewhere that would say that having having any amount of PFOS in your water is a problem. And you can find another medical expert or ten or whatever number you want, they'll say PFOS at this low level is not really helping anything. But then the the studies that are done are very difficult because they do not, they never link exactly anything to a particular problem. So they say this chemical causes this cancer or this chemical causes this change in your metabolism that causes this chem, they can't show any of that. All it, all, all that happens is that you do these studies, epidemiological epidemiological studies where they look and they say, well, these hundred thousand people had some PFOS exposure and they have a higher rate of whatever. And so do you know that PFOS caused a higher rate? They don't know that. Well, it's just an mutation that that was one, definitely one factor. So we have a lot of rules that are being set with on those kinds of theories, scientific theories that are hard, but it's hard to establish the cause hours.
Okay.
At this point, I think we're doing what we need to do.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Please.
I think at the end of the day, people want to know what's in the water they're drinking. And they also want to know that we as a city are doing our best to ensure that they are we are doing our best to make sure that whatever they are consuming is.
we are doing our best to make sure that whatever they are consuming is the best that it can be. And if there's consequences to that, then Liberty is the one who has the burden of doing the filtering. And so I think at the end of the day, that's all people want to know that they're drinking, what's in their drinking water.
Yeah, I we we have, we have tried to get that out at least to some extent. I don't know that we're excuse me, we're perfect in how much information we've got now, but we've got a lot of that information out. And we have worked with Liberty to hold meetings on it. I don't know if they're, did Liberty ever hold the the public meeting to discuss this? I know we talked to them about it. I don't remember.
I don't know, did you not deal with any lawsuit?
They haven't, they haven't come out specifically and and to further complicate with Liberty, they're involved with the class action lawsuits against a lot of these companies. So
That's right.
when I do ask for the information, they they give us high level information, they can't give us specifics about what they're doing because that's a lot of the stuff that's part of the class action lawsuit. And there's a little information I did add in here for Liberty, so when I did talk to them, they did provide some bullet points, you know, they've they've had filters in their system for many years now since two thousand seventeen, and that was a capital, actually it's going a lot into the current rate study issue that the expense that they put in back in two thousand seventeen, they still have not collected back, so they're you know, saying, hey, we've done a lot of investment into our 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 system to try to get PFAS and other things like there's solvents in the ground and and some other things that they're filtering out arsenic and whatnot. They've also gotten some loans with to upgrade some of their facilities and their programs and what they do there as a business. And then, of course, the lawsuit, so as I think Mr. Mayor mentioned, that so they did kick out the the timeframe on when they have to meet the certain standards and that that unfortunately doesn't do anything for residents because it just means longer until they have to address the problem and and that's years down the road on top of Luke Air Force Base having to do finish their remedial investigations and then start actually doing their remediation.
And just to finish the answer to your question, that the biggest thing the city can do is to try to is to try to get Liberty to put more filters in because they don't filter every one of their of their water sources that are going into our overall system. There are a few that are not filtered. I have talked to him personally. One of the questions that came up with this rate discussion is that it would be a good idea to go to the ACC and require that if they get a rate increase, that they use some of the money to invest in more filters so that all all of the lines going out to residents are all of this filtering system that will catch the worst of the PFOS. Whether that's successful or not, I don't know, but that's something that has been considered in terms of response in the ACC process with their with their rate increase.
I think that's a great option, and it shows that we're definitely committed to holding Liberty accountable, so I think that's a great option.
It's very difficult getting question, getting specific answers from them. I mean, I can tell you, we we've asked them multiple times and they're very reluctant to get into the specifics because of concerns over, you know, what residents might do and concerns over what's going to happen with these lawsuits that are going on with Luke Air Force Base and Department of Air Force. That's my plan.
What if we took a little bit of a different tact? I mean, Liberty has not been a good partner. We we all know that, but what if we took a different tact? We got a Communications Director now, have her put together something where she's trying to show the safety of the of what Liberty does, allow them to beat their chests and say what they do to 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 do the filtering, to try and present a safe water product for us in something like that.
Yeah, the key is that you have to get, we'd have to get the information from.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise you're opening yourself up to liability.
Absolutely. Wouldn't be us or the city saying it, let Liberty, hey, these are our partners at Liberty, and this is what they're doing. And show a facility or do something to.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna call them partners. We're not their partner.
Sorry, wrong word.
Not a good word. So yeah, you also, you can look at that to see if you can, if you can communicate with Keith and if you can get enough information from Liberty, then we can put it out as a.
And it didn't, we don't have to mention PFAS or any other stuff, just, hey, this is what we do to filter and and protect you. Right? And that way, we're showing that we're doing the that our utility is doing what they need to to provide a safe product back and and we'll have that as a baseline going forward, but if anything does come.
James, and I think what prompted my initial comment was rather than, you know, this ending up on a Facebook post and then running around with gossip, my thought was, you know, hey, this, you know, this city of Litchfield Park is working with our associates, we are aware of it, we're aware of the situation, while the results are preliminary and maybe years before we know the extent of what's going on, your city staff, you know, at the direction of the Mayor and Council are fully aware and monitoring and taking this issue with the host and works, just something proactive to, I guess, is my point.
We can certainly do that.
Well, I just, it was just, I mean, whatever council wants.
No, I it it the trouble I have with that saying that is that as soon as one question is answered about that fluff piece, you're not, we we cannot give a good answer. There's no, like, no elevator speech answer to what's going on with this problem.
I think it's answer was perfect, or we're still monitoring.
Or so.
Well, we can say that. To let you know, we have it.
We're 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 not really monitoring, we're looking at other people monitoring for us, but and we will keep them informed, so I guess that's another good assignment for for our Communications Director.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to do something rare here. I'm I'm actually going to defend Liberty for just a minute. Liberty has been working with us much better over the last two years than they have in the past, especially on the Hilltop Project, they've been working on slot, on expediting things. I think it's important to understand on the PFOS PFOA case that PFOS didn't happen overnight, rather what happened was the EPD drastically reduced the amounts of PFOS that were allowed by roughly ninety percent, so much so that the standard now is almost undetectable. And this is true with a lot of utilities around the country, and so much so that they have seven years to fix the issue. The issue is there, but a lot of utilities have this company, and it wasn't that the PFOS suddenly got worse. It's that the acceptable standard got drastically lower overnight. That's important to understand.
We don't know about the science, quite frankly.
Sir.
So we don't know how good the science was to drive that change.
That's correct, that's right. I would tell you, for me, I I would be much more concerned about a private well than I would be a Liberty well. I will say that. And speaking of PFOS, I have been asked to testify before ACC about the Liberty rate increase that's being requested, and we will certainly talk about PFOS and PFOA at that time as well. I I just thought it was important to say about Liberty that this is a nationwide issue, it's happened in a lot of places, and that the standard has changed and our relationship has gotten a lot better, or I think it has anyway. Thank you.
Okay, you have a question or comments? Mr. Vice Mayor, anything you'd like to say?
Oh, okay. What'd you do to them? What did you do to them?
I don't know.
Do it again.
If I may, one other thing.
Next report.
One other thing on the on the PFAS is, so PGA North also tested much wells and the maps are in the packet. So they tested wells in the area of Van Buren and Litchfield, which is the origination site of the of the contamination all the way up to just south of our city limits. So according to those readings, there is a little bit of PFAS in the origination area, and there's really nothing for a couple of miles until they get really close to roughly the RID Canal where some of the monitoring wells are, and the numbers jumped quite a bit, and you can see it in the packet, so EPA EPA staff representing PGA North project have concluded that it wasn't that area that supplied the the PFAS into the groundwater, so they're saying it's coming from another source, and there's another map in in this packet that shows potential sources and Luke Air Force Base is one of them, so the idea being that PFAS is actually heading further south than we anticipated, and I've shared that with our representatives, just in case they didn't have that report. So initially, they're saying, well, now we want to look a little further south, so there's a chance that the the plume from Luke is a little further south than we expected and actually crossing lines with the PGA North plume that's currently proceeding, so that's another thing for us to keep an eye out for, and and Luke will be monitoring.
All right, cool. Okay, report on capital improvement of projects and update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Reports in your packet, updated some information based on some some just some updates on all the projects. Welcome any questions, any concerns?
Councilman James. Hold a question, Steve. Thank you. Keep great report, as always, very detailed. I think just since it is a consent agenda item, I was hoping maybe you could just kind of walk through the Camelback Park parking. Basically, what what happened? Why did the price go up so much? Just kind of curious who the three contractors were that we reached out to, just how we got to where we where we are there.
Okay. The couple of things I tried to articulate, but there's more detail to it, so two and a two, two and a half years ago, we started the design and got to the middle point. We had the engineers give us cost estimates for it. Back then, the unit rates were okay for, you know, it as you know, engineering rates are usually lower than what contractors give us, so I always hesitant to believe them and throw a factor of safety on. Fast forward two years plus just a few other spikes in the market, one of the biggest things is you know, laborers now are making, you know, almost thirty dollars an hour, where before they were making fourteen to eighteen dollars an hour. So big parts of these increases are are labor rates and then fuel costs and and a recent spike in in material costs for concrete and asphalt. That's I've seen a little bit of it kind of inching its way up, but these three contractors, which they're all contractors that are on co-ops, different co-ops, Roadrunner reviews them before they built the stacks. Nesbit Contracting, I've worked with them a lot. They actually did the Mill and Overlay for Litchfield Road two years ago. And then DBA Construction, who did Dicer and New School. So recent contractors all on co-ops, very good names, very good work. And that's the range of the prices that that came through, so I went back forth with them, having them, I said, hey, sharpen your pencil, give me your best price, and all of them did come down a little bit on everything. And it's just that that's as close as they can get. So I know there was one contractor who who really wants to work with us, and they said they'll knock five percent off if we can get the job before December, so they're trying to work with us, and that that tells me that they can only budge so much if they're coming back at, you know, five percent discount, we can get the work before December, so that tells me at least the ranges are generally accurate.
Good, okay. Other questions or comments?
How long will this take?
This is, we don't have a lot of lead item items, a lot of lead time items. If this thing took longer than ninety days, I'd be surprised.
Because the whole point was to do it over the summer when traffic park was low. And now, if we start in September or October, we'll be looking at it being under construction during prime usage time. Is that correct?
Councilmember, ye- yes, we have winter sports that use the park. I think that we'll have the ability to work with, you know, traffic control and make parking available. It's not a huge footprint. There's a, if if you can imagine, there's some smaller trees that are along the curb line, so I think we're coming off the curb line no more than forty feet for a fence stop area, so it will just be that kind of parallel area, the the majority of the park will be open for business, we'll just have to work on what we're going to do with parking.
Parking seems like it, that sounds like an easy thing, but really, it's not going to be easy thing.
No, the only option we have is to.
So you might want to make sure you have an answer to that before we start restricting it.
Well, and I've already talked, every contractor, I had long conversations with each one. Parking was the top of the list, followed by make sure that the area is secured with fencing and and safety rope offs because we're we're taking out some of the sidewalks and there's a portion of the playground area that's going to go from grass to gravel. So we don't want anybody getting into the construction zone, so that's one of the first things, safety and housekeeping is the first two things I talked about.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay.
Let's just make sure we hit the neighborhood and let them know since they'll be the ones most affected.
Absolutely, and that's one of the, I have a spec in the contract that says within forty-eight hours of any change, and then one week when they start the project, they'll notify everybody all.
Okay, thank you. Now, special projects update by Mr. Proch.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, excuse me, Members of Council, good evening. This is my one presentation tonight, so any questions regarding the Schutt Square, the Loa, or the Thomas Projects, I'd be happy to answer for you this evening.
Councilman James. When did that light get built on Litchfield and Bethany Home?
In the last few months, sir.
I I mean, maybe, I guess I had been on Litchfield, but we had to go to Falcon Dunes for a golf match the other day, and I was, so I did not know that light was going there, so that light, in conjunction with the light that's going to go in in Missouri, yeah, I was I just, I guess I was just surprised when I saw that, that was my how and how did they, I mean, it looked like they did a nice job on the light.
They did, and I will say Mick Dot, which is American Department of Transportation, did reach out to us about our opinion on that light before it went in.
Okay.
And and that is having that there. Obviously, one of the main reasons having that there is when those warehouses open though, of course.
Correct, and part of that review with the City of Glendale, when we did review and give our opinion on the matter was to encourage and ensure that trucks leaving those warehouses turn left.
Yeah.
Went to Northern Parkway instead of coming into the city.
And we, on the on the Litchfield, Missouri light, we still in negotiations because we we had like half that intersection, Glendale had the other half, is that still?
Yes, sir, negotiations are still ongoing, so we are under contract now with EPS to design that signal that's currently being done. That signal is very complicated in that half of it's ours, half of it's in Glendale, and the new northeast corner pole, when it's in, will be in county right of ways. You've actually got three different governments there involved. And part of it will be eventually reimbursed by Sun Health as well, so anyway, but it is being being designed currently and negotiations are ongoing in the City of Glendale, sir.
Questions for council?
We're all, we all have questions.
They all do. So in your report, the Delana Mae Building received the MS approval, so now we have potentially three buildings. Could you provide a just a general timeline on construction of the, you know, the one that's currently under construction, the Rodolfo Parcel and the Delana Mae Building and how those kind of all fit together?
Councilmember Fisher would be happy to, in a time, she'll see me look at Keith for concurrence on some of these beliefs. With the Heritage Partners Project on Lot Three directly north of the park, we anticipate completion in spring of twenty-seven. Thank you. In spring of twenty-seven, do keep in mind that that project and the other two, I will speak on our shell, meaning they do not have TI plans at this time. We would anticipate as they get closer towards completion of the shell that TI plans would come in and they would work nearly concurrently. One of the things we have to be cognizant of is no contractor wants another contractor working within the same bounds. So at least the ones to the north with H and B Builders, there's an opportunity for them to represent the TI portion as well, so that might work out okay. With Lot One, Lot Two, the Rodolfo Family Project, they are submitting their construction drawings for review at the end of this month to break ground before the end of this year. That one, since last presented, council has grown slightly, which is very encouraging to us. The rooftop patio got larger, the outdoor spaces got larger. I've I would anticipate and contractually obligated to do an eighteen-month build on that, so that would put us summer of twenty-seven. And then with Delana Mae, having the kind of component, we have given them a two-year timeframe through the ongoing negotiations of that DA to complete that because there is just so many additional complications or complexities, I would say, with that project. That one will come before council for the final conceptual designs, the development agreements, and the sale of land in October with an expectation of breaking ground hopefully by the end of the year, if not, start of next year, and again, a two-year timeframe without.
Councilman Allen.
Yes, on the the Hilltop with the PW Litchfield Heritage Center, are they clear on what they're responsible for with what the city is responsible for as far as like the outside?
Sure, so Councilmember Allen, the I'm I'm glad to say I jinxed myself in writing this report because today they sent over some of the construction draws. They're calling it a twenty-five percent plan, so it's it's not very far to answer part of your first question. The clarity has been restated on a number of. The clarity has been restated a number of times to ensure that all of our park design is designed so they have the least amount of things to worry about. The fire department access for the park is, and the cottages, including the museum, is being handled by us, the ADA parking is being handled by us. Within their lease area, the only thing they need to do is make the building beautiful and add some landscaping. But otherwise, every connecting path, sidewalk, parking space, fire department control is all being handled outside in a budding lease area on purpose, so that is not anything that they have to worry about.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I had my board meeting with them yesterday, and they gave a very extensive project updates, I just want to make sure that there, everyone is communicating well.
Yes, we were happy to see that today, after they sent in these twenty-five percent plans, I did reach out to all of our consultants on all of our projects. It's been a mixed bag as far as how many our consultants, their Grace Design Studio has reached out to, which is actually using to us. The landscape architects are in classic communication. Our architect has not been reached out to, our electrical engineer has not been reached out to, and I know they had a meeting today with followers for the engineering this afternoon at one-thirty, to get that going, because that is also lagging behind.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember?
Just, and or Andrew's point was, so, is it all timed together, so hypothetically, next forty-five to sixty days, we're gonna see action on Camelback Park and the wall as well, or not, is it just the parking and not the wall?
Just the parking.
So that's gonna happen, and then I think it said all, we were looking for the initial parts of the initial construction began on the roundabout in the underpass as well?
Yeah, you'll be, you'll, Councilmember James, it, I sure look so. There's exactly three hundred and twenty days until school opens, and we're doing fine up here, we're just fine. So, yes, it is anticipated that at least dirt can start being moved end of October, beginning of November, to start getting some of the outside geometry set. The good thing is, because it's our property and our frontage, and there's nothing impacted on that side of the street, we can start to lay that out.
And I just, I want to make sure that there really is very few situations I find myself in now where I'm not getting peppered with questions, you know, hey, when does this start, when does this start, when does the building start, so I just want to make sure that, you know, nothing worse than saying, yeah, we're gonna start on this in July, and here we are, ember, so I just want to tell everybody, because hypothetically, by the end of this year, we will have two buildings going in the square, we'll have the libraries already, the the footers are poured on the Alquafria, the so there's, I keep telling people, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts this year, and probably one of the biggest construction years the city's ever seen.
Yes, and Councilmember James, it's a great segue, it's not in this packet, but it's something we've been working on internally with our Director of Communications and our City Manager, is to have a show and tell, quite frankly, I will think of a better name for it, Yosher will think of that name for it, but a an opportunity to present and just have boards in an open house, so people can come see and everything that's going on. Certainly, our websites are up to date, and as updates occur, we love to hit our websites as well.
The one that you need to be careful on is the underpass.
That's right.
The underpass, that you've got our school. You know, the high-pressure gas line that goes down through Long Litchfield Road, that will take a significant amount of time for us to get it relocated. So that will hold up that underpass. And I don't know if we have even the location of the underpass figured out yet. I knew that it was not Litchfield.
Set in stone. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the point, and he's a hundred percent right, there is, there is no way that underpass will be done by the time the school opens, mainly because of the high-pressure gas line that was just, as was just said. It will get built, but it's important to remember that the underpass is not a DA component. We're gonna build it there because it needs to be there, it needs to be there for the Hilltop, for the library, et cetera, but it's not a DA component, but it will get built. We are looking at server location, staff talked about this for a good two hours this week, when we're excited to put this underpass. And of course, it's tricky too, because what we build now, what we build now, we don't want to tear up a year from now. And what I mean by that, we were talking about building it diagonally underneath the roundabouts. But it's a lot easier to dig up a straight road and put it underpass than just to dig up the middle of a roundabout, especially when traffic's going through it.
So we're gonna dig up, we're not gonna take a roundabout that we just built and destroy it, so that's not gonna happen, so they have to find another solution.
And we are, it's complicated, but we are.
But the underpass is, you know, is the one, is the one thing that will not be finished, the rest of it, I'm confident. Look at August of two thousand twenty-six.
We still have a firm commitment that you're not gonna get a haircut or shave.
That's true.
It's gonna have a ponytail.
So without the underpasses, pedestrian access shifted towards Camelback and Litchfield then, for the high school?
Councilmember Fraser, we are exploring every possible option, because there must be the way for, it is an open campus, and we do anticipate Starbucks, Jack in the Box, Fan Express being frequented, as kids come and go after-school activities with the theater as well. We're looking at every option available to ensure safety.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a, you know, a couple of stoplights, you know, that are to the north of the stoplight at Camelback, so there'll be other places across. And it's not like the underpass is gonna be five years behind, you know, maybe it's nine months or so, here. I think it's roughly nine months to get the the high-pressure line relocated, so that's that will close, that just shifts at nine months, it's not like, it's not, it's not forever.
Just one comment, I really like the idea of having open houses where people can come in, because there is so much going on. There's also, which I don't think we mentioned in Keith's report, the pavement, the pavement management that's coming up, so that's gonna be a lot of, like, everything is gonna be torn up. I think if we don't communicate proactively, like, when it's starting, how long it's gonna be affected. I think if we don't do that, then we'll have a lot of pushback from from folks wondering what is going on, why it's now, why is it in like our winter when everyone's coming, everything's all torn up, so I think that'll go a long way to help them feel confident that we're moving in the right direction, and we've got a lot going on.
Okay.
So, to that point, please, the open houses, I love that idea.
Councilmember Clark?
I appreciate the update on the Thomas, and you know, that was such a long process that we went through, it just looks like nothing is happening based on what you're saying in this. Do you have a timeline that they have to start something happening in the DA that we we dealt with them? No, sir.
There we do not.
No, sir, but there's certain things they have to do before they can get a CFO. For example, the driveway, the sidewalk, and most importantly, the wall, and none of that has been done, none whatsoever. So they could, they could do all the inside improvements, but they cannot open to get a CFO until all those things are done, and none of it has been done in this climate.
Now, to my point, yes, as mentioned in the report, we did see the first submittal of those site improvements, the driveways, the walls, the landscaping, sidewalks, in September of last year. And since we've provided those comments, the developer has been working independently, as far as we understand, we have not received hardly any course audits over the last twelve months, so we were available. Occasionally, we hear about addressing or different kinds of trees to plant, but as far as the site improvements that are needed and to be neighborly with those houses to the east, there has been militating.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for your reports. All right, the magistrate court report is non-verbal, so it's in your packet, great, and if you have any questions, get a hold of the city manager. Just to the consent agenda, items eight or seven, A through only item eight, A through L, Councilmember wishes to take off the consent agenda for discussion. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda, items, items seven, A through L?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Now we go on to our business agenda. First item on the business agenda is Sun Health Development Agreement amendment. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, I would like to say, first of all, thank you for, Richard Suzy, for being here with us tonight to represent Sun Health. As you know, for the last several months, we've been working with Sun Health on an amendment to their twenty-twenty DA. And there's reasons for that on both sides, there's things that certainly the city needs various infrastructure components, some issues we would like to fix in the original DA, and also Sun Health has requested some more time. So we are working on that, and that DA amendment will be coming back due to the next few months, discussions are ongoing. What this item is, is just an extension on their DA. Per the original DA terms, that the final plans for Phase One, now there are sections of Phase One, but we'll say Phase One overall, the final plans for Phase One would be submitted in fall of twenty-twenty-five, which of course, we're there, and the conceptual plans for Phase Two. And that that can't be done yet, because it's just not there development-wise. So Sun Health has asked for an extension for that, but what this is, this allows them until February second of twenty-twenty-six to make the actual DA amendment. So again, this is just an extension to get the DA amendment lined up, and we are continuing to work on that. And February second is a date that both parties agreed on. It's pretty straight up, and can efforts continue to work as far as the sewer lines go, and various things such as the irrigation channels, there's a lot of things that are going on even as this happens, because again, it relates to the Hilltop. For example, Sun Health working on the designs between Camelback or the Hilltop itself. Councilmember Fraser had asked about access, for example, we're talking about getting people across Litchfield Road at the Denny Litchfield Signal. Because that will be the safest place to cross until the underpass exists. So, these are all things that are connected, but I think this makes sense until both parties can agree on a DA amendment, and again, that would come back in the next few months. Yes, sir. Is it stay in the same language of just submittal of plans at that point? Is that what we're doing, is we're just extending the date for that submittal of plans? Councilmember Claire, so that would actually be a change in the DA amendment, this is just to give them more time to do that. As far as that goes, that'd be the actual DA text amendment.
Working back and forth.
DA, exactly the same, just change the date.
Got it.
Which would give more time to staff and then set up to work on the, any other amendments.
Just time to reach an agreement on on the actual amended DA.
We've been working on that for a number of months, but with the upcoming deadline in the next month and a half, we just want to make sure there's enough buffer time to get it before council, especially not having a December meeting and the different things like that. This just extends that time by ninety days. Any questions in council? Mr. Vice Mayor, you okay?
A motion to approve.
I did have my question, or?
Well, let's get it, let's get the second out first.
I'll second it.
All right, now, the discussion is.
So the sewer line construction is unaffected by this. Just want to make sure that there's no obstacles for the Hilltop Academy moving forward.
Yes, it's a good question, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a few more months for you to work on this agreement.
Thanks for being here, guys.
Okay, next item of business is introduction ordinance twenty-five dash two ninety-four, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, when we went through the city charter process, it changed a lot of things. And a lot of those things were things that now have to be changed in the city code. Just to be clear how that works, so a city charter supersedes city code, but city code can be more complicated than the charter can, it can expand upon it. But again, the the code cannot conflict with charter if that makes sense, anyway, so that's what this does. Staff went through a lot of, we went through the charter, we went through the code, it's just as exciting as it sounds, and made a lot of cleanup and changes of city code, it's twenty-one pages of changes of city code, this is the first one, there will be another one coming your way as we keep going through code. But a lot of this is chart, is charter code cleanup. Some of it is gender cleanup, because obviously, the code was dated, and other things too, that just need to be updated. I could send you a version that shows fifteen different colors, you can see where all the changes come from if you would like to. But again, this is a general clip of code for the charter along with general updates. Again, this is the first reading, certainly welcome any questions if you have any at this time.
Questions from council? If not, is there a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-five dash two ninety-four?
Second.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please, oh, excuse me.
We're in here to talk about electing the vice mayor. That's the part that I did not see in there when I read through it, that doesn't mean it wasn't in there, but I just want to make sure that that was included in this, or maybe we can make sure that that.
Well, it may, there are certain things we couldn't put in the code, because if they're in the charter, they don't need to be restated in the code. So you don't want duplication, so we try to remove certain things from the code that were already addressed in the charter, if it's in the charter, it's that that's where that provision is.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Joe.
Okay, any other discussion before we vote? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. I don't believe we have a reason for an executive session, correct?
We do not.
Yes?
No, no executive session, sir.
Because I was in the process of saying closed, meeting is adjourned.